All right, it is five thirty P M. We will call the order Amherst School Board meeting on Monday, November eighteenth. We appreciate patience as we move this from last Thursday to today and in order for wider board attendance, Terry Bean will join us. Momentarily and then Jason White will not be in attendance tonight, so we will be operating with a four-person team. Uh for this meeting when Terry is able to arrive here uh in just a few minutes. So as we start the call to order, I do want to make one thing. Uh or bring one thing to the forefront and give a recognition to Ellen Brujan. Uh it came out over the last couple of weeks that Ellen is going to be leaving the town. And therefore can no longer serve as the town or the school district moderator uh during our annual meeting. She has been replaced uh per the RSA's by our district clerk Tony Ortiz. He has appointed Mark Vincent as the acting moderator or the moderator ten-four. Per the applicable RSA's and Mark will be taking over and leading the meeting uh in March and then he will actually, I should say. The final year of Ellen's term, it was a three-year term, the final year of her term will be voted on at that same at election day in March. And Mark will be leading our meeting in February during the deliberative hearing, our annual meeting. So I want to thank Ellen for all her service, not only to the school district as moderator, but. As a past board member, as a longtime town resident, uh everybody, nobody needs to worry, she is keeping the Amherst preschool, we confirm that, so. Uh that is still staying input, but she's just no longer residing in town, so she will no longer be able to serve in that position. So we thank her for her service and look forward to working with Mark as we get ready for deliberative here over the coming months. With that, I will open it up for any public comment. If there are any folks here in the room that would like to speak, you can feel free to. Pull your chair a little bit forward and then speak into the owls. Otherwise, I don't see. Uh where we got participants looking online at the online participants tonight?
Jason on?
Uh Jason's not coming tonight. No, Jason will not be here. We do have some attendees. If you are interested in speaking, feel free to raise your hand. Virtually, and we'll ask that you turn on your camera if you'd like to speak. Give it another moment to see if anybody online would like to speak tonight. It does not look like we have that. So without any hands raised, I will move us on tonight, knowing that we do have a hard stop at eight o'clock and we do have a non-public tonight. So we will keep that in our minds as we uh go forward on to the next item. It is our consent agenda. We do have uh some items on there before we take a motion to approve it and then discuss it. I do want to recognize. An anonymous donation for the Clark Wilkins Food Service and then also a donation and an in-kind donation for a new front entrance mat here. At Amherst Middle School from Depper Equipment. So we thank them for those donations. And I with that, I will take the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented tonight.
I would like to pull um the minutes. I just have a slight. Just a slight amendment.
Yep, let's uh let's do the unanticipated revenue first. We'll uh approve number two, Greg and Lush.
I was gonna ask, do you want to pull that until we have our discussion about uh donations?
Uh no, we've uh I I think we're okay with with that one there, yeah. Um. So yeah, again, I think we're we're okay with that one. So uh we'll take a motion then to pass or to accept the unanticipated revenue.
Make the motion.
I have a motion from Shannon. Take a second. Terry, uh any further conversation on that piece?
Just a big, big thank you to those folks um. For that and that looks great. That was amazing.
Okay, uh are all in favor of the donations then? One, two, three, and I have it abstaining from Greg, so three in favor, deny one abstention. All right, Shannon, for your minutes on October seventeenth.
Yes, very minor. Um on page ten, under section nine, policy update, they're just a typo. Um the first line, Mr. Gothier noted that Mr. Fritz had bought. It should be brought. Um and then a little further in the same section, and I can send these over to Dana, but the sentence begins, Mr. Fritz. Mentioned that Mr. Gothier sent information to the board about the response from. It should read legal, it reads lean. So again, just two minor typos, but um. Send those over. So that would be my amendment on, but to accept them otherwise.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept him as amended by Shannon? Terry, motion? Take it a second. Okay, I work from Shannon. Any further comments on that? Everybody comfortable with the name, making those two minor spelling changes or grammatical changes? Okay, all in favor? One, two, three, four. So four, nothing, that one passes. All right, next item on the agenda. Bear with me, I lost my agenda item, so we will talk about reports. Any questions, anything that anybody wants to address to the superintendent about the reports tonight? We have facilities, two treasury reports, and then the principals' reports. Principals, as a reminder, will not join us in every meeting. They will be at select meetings throughout the year. They were with us in October, so they will not be with us here in November.
I keep getting kicked off. I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get on the line.
Okay.
I didn't see it in the uh. From the report from uh Clark Wilkins, but I heard good things about the new twelve seat in Clark Wilkins from the teacher's bathroom, so I was, I promised that I mentioned it, so. Man, I word.
Perfect. Is it under facilities maybe instead? Uh great, thank you for that, Greg. One of those little things you don't realize the importance of until you don't have it, right?
I heard about a lot of people.
Yeah. Okay, uh you want me to wait another minute, Terry and Shannon, while you're?
I I I have a little sticky note on that. I'm u- I'm utilizing the sticky note feature in Simly, which is fantastic until you get kicked off and can't get back on.
Okay, why don't we move on to the budget presentation if we need to go back for anything? Well, let's, we do the budget if we need to go back for anything pressing, we can certainly do that, so. All right, with that, Amy, it is uh your turn if you're ready.
Steve's going to.
Mike.
I mean, Mike, sorry.
It's all good. Forty and slip.
They see who does.
Yeah.
Sorry, I think it was what, by July, January of last year, I finally started referring to Mike as opposed to seeing you for any question? You're ahead of my pace.
Hope it all along.
But yeah, just fly up to the beginning. Trying to go to flat chat.
Yeah, hold on.
I'm getting used to something. I tend to like it, but. I have to just remember, oh, we get, I'll get again. There we go.
Our in business.
All right, so you can just go. Down to right there. Perfect. Okay, so. Uh tonight is draft two of the budget. Um there were some uh significant changes from draft one to draft two. Most notably, we became aware of a retirement for the end of this fiscal year. And the difference in budgeting for that replacement teacher is a total savings of forty-nine thousand eight twenty-four.
I thought it's gonna go the other way.
No, no, we have some positive news um for the budget. So uh draft one, we just use an average to budget um for. The the regular retirement payout line, but the eleven-one deadline to submit for A E A. Um allowed us to recalculate that retirement payout. With a additional decrease of thirty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars. Uh the A S S A deadline for submission is in January, so it's possible we may be able to recalculate this again, but it won't be. Um as dramatic as those amounts are smaller. Um we also did a deep dive into the four-three B participation and made some adjustments. Um so those netted some savings as well. Uh right now, we're operating in three types of retirement payouts. We have some folks who retire. Based on fourteen-two, we have some folks who retire um. Based on the the veteran salary schedule, and then we have newer folks who participate in the four-three B. So it's a little complicated to calculate all of those. Um so we we did a deep dive specifically into the four-three B participation and. Were able to make some adjustments um. On that, we also received updated workers' comp and unemployment comp rates from Primex. Uh and we um updated the professional development allocations based on um. Updated eligible staff numbers. So all of those. Adjustments combined resulted in a net decrease of thirteen thousand four oh nine.
Amy, can Greg ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Um so are all of those because you made some assumption on the first draft that you got more information that like? That you just changed the uh numbers for number of people or the rates?
For which? For the four-three B?
All all went at line at thirteen four oh nine line?
Yeah.
Or were those choices that you made to um change the benefits?
No, so the workers' comp and unemployment comp, we receive those rates from Primax.
Okay.
So we don't get them.
More realizing the actual rate bracket.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
And the four-three B, those are some assumptions that we make because. Not everybody participates, but so we look at who's eligible, who's eligible to participate. Who hasn't signed up to participate, and we do have to make some assumptions.
Yeah.
Um based on that. So we just did a really deep dive. As opposed to just doing like a percentage participation rate to try to be as accurate as possible.
Thanks.
All right, um so we also received updated rates for property and liability from Primex. And that was an increase of seven thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Um as part of the subcommittee review process, there was a request to increase the number of after-school programs. At Clark Wilkins by five. Uh the cost for this increase is five thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. Um also as part of the subcommittee, subcommittee meetings, we discovered that there was no funding. For the new vans, maintenance and gas. So I worked with um the athletic director. Um to estimate those costs, Kelly Braley, and we added an additional five thousand dollars uh to cover those expenses. And then finally, there was a small increase in the New Hampshire School Board Association fee for next year. So that added an additional four hundred and twenty dollars. So the total change for all of these adjust adjustments is a decrease of eighty-four thousand ninety-four dollars. All right, so as a result of this budget reduction, the the increase from F Y twenty-five to F Y twenty-six. Is now one million two hundred thirty-four thousand dollars, three hundred forty. Two hundred thirty-four thousand three hundred forty-five dollars or a three-point six percent increase. As opposed to the three-point nine percent increase that was presented in draft one. So um this is just a reminder of the budget assumptions, including the health and dental increases. Where we are with the A E A and A S S A contracts uh that are both in year three. And the decreased New Hampshire retirement system rates for F Y twenty-six. So also as a reminder of the post-staffing changes, the LEA representative uh was funded as a part-time position. In the current year budget, that position was made whole based on need using grant funds. The point four percent that was funded by the grant now needs to be added to the operating budget. Um and as a reminder, the point four percent is a new request and will therefore not be included in the default calculations. Other staffing changes include the reduction of four special education professionals. Um at Clark Wilkins and four at Amherst Middle School, and this is based on a review of I E Ps. And aligned to projected student needs. Uh the total net staffing changes is uh approximately a four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar decrease. So the changes by category uh changed based on the draft one to draft two changes. The retirement payout and teacher replacement cost savings show up in the curriculum category. The additional stipends for the Clark Wilkins programs are included in the administration category. The N H S V A fee um is in the capital miscellaneous category. Property and liability is in facilities. The van maintenance and gas is in transportation. And those benefit changes are spread throughout most of the categories. So um I created this as a new slide and it seemed to resonate with folks. Um so I included it again here. So this shows the, it this illustrates the impact of the health and dental rate increases in the budget. So breaking apart the budget strictly by personnel versus non-personnel. Of that one point two million dollar increase from F Y twenty-five to F Y twenty-six. Over five hundred and eighty-four thousand is attributed to the increases in health and dental. Uh the remaining amount for increase for personnel is for wages and other benefits. And that's about five hundred and ninety-four thousand. And the non-personnel costs include many increases and offsetting decreases, but net to just over fifty-five thousand. It was about thirty-one thousand previously. The the big change, we did do a re- reclassification of. The athletic director and assistant athletic director as a stipend, so that was in personnel to services provided. Um by other districts. So it went from a personnel la- item to a non-personal item. So it's, yeah, there's no increase or decrease, it just is classified.
So but the long-term, do stipends get factored into post-career benefits at all? In terms of a teacher's salary, if they have a stipend, does that get added into numbers?
For their.
For retirement?
So.
So that.
But it doesn't matter, like it, they're.
No, but that that still has, oh, they're still paid, but yeah, they're paid differently. Yeah, never mind. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
I see that like someone who has been part of the contract negotiations.
Say that again.
You say that as someone who's been part of contract negotiations.
All right, so default calculation, the only change in the default calculation from graph one to two. Is in the employer wage and benefits amounts as there were um decreases in the budget and. Those were also decreased in the default. So the total change between the F Y twenty-five budget and the F Y twenty-six. Default is now one million three hundred twelve dollars. All right, so this slide shows the difference between the F Y twenty-six default calculation. And the F Y twenty-six proposed budget. Uh these are items that are not included in the default and are therefore at risk if the. Budget does not pass. So besides the non- we, non-union wage and he- health and dental increases. Uh this includes facilities items, primarily preventive maintenance, contracts, replacement equipment, grounds up upkeep. Some software increases and that office trailer at Clark Wilkins. For curriculum, this is literacy curriculum um for the new program next year and other instructional materials. And some curriculum software. For technology, this is primarily replacement laptops. Uh for administration, the point four LEA uh representative is included in here. As well as um non-union wages and benefits and the increase for the S R O. For capital miscellaneous, there's a small increase for minute taker needs. Um and some other administrative services, transportation, that van maintenance and gas is included in there. So the total difference between the F Y twenty-six default and the proposed budget is two hundred. Thirty-four thousand thirty-three dollars or an increase of point seven percent. So this is.
Question, yeah. I'm sorry, just um the S R O, and why wouldn't that be default if if it's already part of our operating to have an S R O? And if the increase is coming from the police department's contract and not, you know, I was just saying, hey, love you, have more money.
Unfortunately, the the body did not vote for that increase. So that's why it's not. So the the voting body did not vote, did not see that. So.
But didn't.
So it's not.
But the town votes on the union contract.
So it's not our, it's not.
But it's a different, yeah. They're passing that contract out to us, that contract increase out to us. But that, but again, that contract did get voted on.
It did.
By the same taxpayers that would be paying for it, so.
If you want me to check the legal, I can, but it would.
For the cost of smart.
Well, yeah, no, no, but it's a, it's a good question because now how we're, how is?
It's just hard how.
How are our taxpayer, how are our taxpayers not being double-dipped on this? Are you, is the police department, let let's just for round numbers, let's say it's fifty thousand for the S R O salary and benefits. And it's ten thousand, it's going up to sixty thousand because of the contract.
Yep.
We're being billed a portion of that increase, so let's say it's twenty-five hundred. Are they only putting fifty-seven hundred on their town budget and then three thousand?
We have to pay for it no matter what. I mean, we have to.
Yeah, right now taxpayers are gonna be, taxpayers will be charged per se for the increase in the contract, so there's a ten thousand dollar increase. It is gonna go to the taxpayers, so.
They're gonna split with us.
So they actually split.
We pay a portion on it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, no one.
But it's just a big part of the default because it wasn't specifically, if I'm understanding what you're saying, it wasn't specifically voted for on our. Right, so it's not a part of.
It's not a part of it, it's not a default. It's never been in the default, the increase.
Only, whatever the percentage, if it's ten thousand dollar increase, seven thousand.
There, there's, no, there's different, there's different charges. So it's typically different from year to year, but as far as default. We include the the prior year, we don't include their proposed year. In the default. But so, so we have an S R O, it including wages and benefits. We pay a portion of that, of their total wages and benefits. And we have to pay that regardless. But the portion of the increase from F Y twenty-five to F Y twenty-six is not included in the default.
Yeah. Because. But will be next year, right? I mean, it would be next year. If it if it passes. Our budget passes this year, now that fraction would be.
But the increase to the next year would not be.
Right, right, right.
And we have a memorandum of understanding with Amherst Police Department that we request the services of a school resource officers.
Oh, I totally think it's, I'm just wanting to make sure that the town's not billing for sixty thousand to taxpayers and then we're billing for. Five thousand, and so it's a sixty-five thousand dollar charge for a sixty thousand dollar position, so that's my.
No, so there's a a contract and we pay a portion of that contract. In Amherst School District and in Southern.
Do we direct pay to the officers? It's only take me six years to ask this question, but I assume we just pay the police.
Yeah. All right, keep going. We're on slide twelve. No, no, go back.
Here?
Yep, nope.
Here.
Yep.
All right.
All right, so another way of showing the difference between the default calculation is the budget is um. Is based on items potentially at risk if the budget should fail. So as a reminder, the board will need to make the final decisions on what discretionary items to fund. Uh by the budget based on a bottom-line dollar amount should the budget not pass. So possible items at risk are the cost for the point four LEA representatives. Uh those facility items previously discussed, utility increases, office trailer, preventive maintenance, repairs. Uh non-union wages and benefits, technology, those laptops. Um and the other instructional materials. As well as the S R O. So this is just a different way of showing that information as requested from a. Um community member last year. All right, so I um for this draft, I was able to write. A draft of the warrant articles for the board to review. Uh so the first warrant article will be article twelve for the building. Um project bond. Um and as a reminder, the board applied for and the board of selectment approved impact fees to be used to update the costing of the project. Um and that um there was a process that uh followed that work. So that process was a review and confirmation of the building design specifications. At a recent Amherst Building and Grounds Committee meeting uh with the architect, the construction manager and S U staff. Followed by a detailed line-by-line analysis of the general construction costs, soft costs and contingencies. Uh with the facilities director, architect and construction manager. Further review of um owner's costs with internal staff, including. Uh the foods, a a pretty deep dive with the food service director to look at kitchen needs of the building. And then finally, a presentation by the facilities director to the Building and Grounds Committee of the final costs for the warrant article. So at that meeting, there was also a request by the committee to recommend that the board consider solar again as a potential warrant article. And there was also a discuss uh discussion about starting a conversation with the town. About possibly expanding the path of natural gas to the Wilkins site. Right now, it's, I guess, about two miles out. So if we were to be able to make that happen, it would um, we would realize uh some significant savings. Using natural gas as opposed, as opposed to propane. So those were uh some of the outcomes of that meeting.
Kind of benefit to anyone who lives.
Who lives in the path, yeah.
Is this, this building is run partly on fuel oil, correct? Yeah, cuz I know at least one of the buildings was.
Yeah.
They wanna put natural gas in another direction of the village. Well, appreciate it.
Next slide.
You might be in the path of that one.
All right, so the um.
Not right now.
Article twelve is written in the same way as previously approved by Bond Council and Department of Revenue Administration. I will have them review it again, however, um with the exception of adding the narrative section to include the estimated cost. And estimated tax impact for three years. Um so you could see that at the bottom, it's set up similar to the way we do um. Uh teacher and support staff contracts showing the fiscal year, the estimated cost and the estimated tax impact. So upon receiving the updated cost amount for the project. Uh I was able to obtain an amortization schedule from the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank. For a bond for uh twenty-five years at level principal and the interest rate uh provided was uh three-point nine-five percent. Um so the bond amount and tax rate are included on here. Um the most recent evaluation is the twenty twenty-four valuation that is on um. On the most recent, most recent tax rate bills. Uh as I said, this warrant article has not been reviewed by council and D R A yet, but will, they will be, it will be as part of the remote review process. For all warrant articles.
Amy, do you have off the top of your head what the average assessed home value is? I know four eighty was the number we used previously. I don't know if that went up with the last value.
We don't know. I always ask the town prior to determine the tax impact um.
When it comes on for a public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
But yeah, the last two years, it's been the same.
Yeah.
I can't even, this.
Yeah.
This is the first time I'm seeing the updated number because of that and buildings and grounds.
Yes.
So that is not gonna change, so that fifty-two.
Fifty-two, nine, twenty-one, eight, twenty-eight. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't say that, did I? It's a big number.
Well, I mean.
Yes.
We've been very honest that every, every year you wait, that costs go up and that you get the same amount. Of bang, but let, well, you get less bang, forty bucks because it goes up year over year, so. Um we weren't lying.
It goes up.
Nine, 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 seven. Yeah, it was, it was just shy of the deal last year, I know.
Yeah. So as I said, Roger did a a very deep dive with um D E W and Vanwell.
Trying to find any efficiencies, I know.
Yep, he did, he did, and he was able to. This was not the first number that was.
So it could be worse.
And that will, we'll talk about that in the committee updates, correct, with building grounds.
Yeah, I mean, it's high level, but we can.
Yep.
Okay, just, just making sure that that part is probably not gonna change.
No.
Okay.
No. Um so.
On twelve, are we gonna see more options for time and um rates for the?
So.
Project?
If, yes, if you folks want different terms.
We have the certain terms.
Yeah, you'll just have to tell me what term I'm assuming.
With the bond bank offering to inform what we think is a good value for the town?
So. What, the way it works is I will give them, uh you know, I'll request amortization schedules and they can provide them to me.
Okay, I remember a couple of years ago that we had options. Like when I was.
Well, we looked at, we looked at level principal versus.
No, we had other, we had other things too, we had different timeframes as well.
Yep, I can, I can get whatever you, you folks.
All right, I'll work with you later on that, I guess, then.
Yep. Yep, they're very fast, so I can, they'll, they'll provide amortization schedules very quickly, so. I assume that the board did not want to do level debt, but if you would like me to. I.
I'm good.
You're the only.
I'm good, yeah.
So if you, unless you want.
No, no, I reported this.
I can do a forty year, I can do a thirty, I, I mean, thirty is the highest, so if you wanna see a thirty, I can do that. Um.
So thirty and a twenty, thirty.
I can do a thirty and a twenty. Absolutely.
That's fine.
Sure. Okay.
Right, that's twenty-five, yeah.
All right, so back to um.
And I mean, we're, we have not, this year we have not looked at any other options besides the N H M B B, right? We haven't looked at. Like private mortgage companies, getting any kind of sweetheart deals for schools or anything like that, right? Nothing else, right?
Okay.
No, the, you could go with a financial advisor and do that, it's a, it's a process.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and honestly, New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank does, they do a really good job. They have a good track record, um especially with script projects. All right, so um for, as mentioned, there was a request by Building and Grounds Committee to consider putting forth a solar warrant article. So uh Roger and I are working on. So Roger and I are working on getting some costing information. This, we just had our meeting last Thursday, so we don't have that for tonight, but we will look to have this information for the board for draft three. Go ahead.
Just.
Yeah.
Refresh my memory.
Yep.
We know that the building as it's currently designed. We could add solar later if we so chose. We don't have to do it at the time of building.
We did not.
Okay. Thank you, just confirm it.
Yes, you are correct. Alright, so. This is just the Warren article budget. I won't, won't read it. It just includes the budget amount and the default calculation. Okay, so the next two articles are derived from the Capital Needs Assessment Funding Plan. And I think we went over. Those articles at the last meeting, but following full payment of the. AMS roof and interior renovation project, we will have about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the reserves. The recommendation for FY twenty six is for two Warren articles. One for six hundred and seventy five thousand come from unassigned fund balance. And then an additional four hundred thousand dollar Warren article to come from new taxation. So as discussed last month, this recommendation was approved by the Amherst Building and Grounds Committee. And based on the revised draft CNA plan. In order to continue to fund the AMS roof HVAC interior renovation projects. As well as other planned projects to maintain the building. These, this additional four hundred thousand dollar Warren article is needed to save the required funds to complete the next phase. Of the project. We will not have sufficient funds to complete this phase this summer, but should these Warren articles pass. And we have the unassigned fund balance, we will have the funds to complete the next phase in FY twenty seven. And the F one, the additional projects through FY thirty are also shown. In this grid. Yep.
Okay, I'm so sorry, I have some questions.
It's fine.
So if we chose to not put that four hundred thousand in here, since we wouldn't be spending it until. Twenty seventh anyway, we could choose to instead put the. On next year's balance. No?
Because then we won't, yeah, we won't be able to. In like December, January timeframe, say, yeah, we're a go and be able to.
Okay, so.
Order materials, get projects started, so that's why.
We have to get them now so that we can, we can actually get it scheduled and be sure that we can pay for it when it.
We need the money in.
Okay, no, that's okay. That's, that's why I just wanna understand.
Absolutely.
Um, cuz spreading out costs as much as possible.
I know, this is, this is really the one year where we need to do this. Additional Warren article. As it stands right now, so if you can see going forward, it's just the, the six seventy five. Out of unassigned fund balance that's projected, cuz you can see in FY twenty nine, that's the next big roof project, the one point six. So this is just a, a catch up year. Of course, there's a gap.
Well, when we knew that, that if we didn't redo AMS altogether, then it's gonna have to phase out anyway, so.
Yep.
So on that point about spreading it out, like you know, Terry said about the school board wants to spread out the costs, which is true, but also the, I think taxpayer look at too, so. We agree as well to put the grounds, but I think it makes a lot of sense. We look at like the FY twenty seven dropping down to eight hundred K, which is below the. Amount we like to have. I think it makes sense to have another. Certain amount there too, to spot what that would go to and allow us to have the. The funds. And I also mentioned it would be like a way to assess the community support for these like, you know. Spring day events of facilities, but also the planned roof repairs, spread it out. So maybe a four hundred K next year, maybe we put like. Two hundred K, something like that, just to kind of get temperature of the room. But let's face it, next year's discussion, but that's a proposed schedule. So we didn't read that whole schedule until like.
Yep. Alright, so next slide. So this is just that Warren article for the four hundred thousand and you can see it's. The sum to come from new taxation. And then the next. One is six seventy five, it'd be raised from unassigned fund balance. And then next. This is the technology fund. That we began last year. And in accordance with the three year technology plan, an additional seventy five thousand is recommended to be funded from unassigned fund balance. And then the, this fund was also created to fund vehicle costs. And the recommendation is to fund this at thirty thousand dollars from unassigned fund balance. And so this is just a summary of the Warren articles. And the board will need to consider the order of the Warren articles, and this is important because. Those Warren articles that are funded from unassigned fund balance are funded. In order as funds are available. So the bond is set, the bond for solar, the operating budget. Capital reserve, that's from taxation, but the. Articles sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, the board will need to decide on that order. I just put it in the same order that it has been in the past.
Should we do that?
You don't have to do that tonight, but.
That's just before we have public hearing, correct?
Yep.
And even then, I think we can do it after public hearing. So my question on the technology funds, looking at the. Proposed budget calculation, technology is already going up forty five thousand. Are we taking any funds out of this fund to offset? Additional costs beyond that forty five? Or are we not touching that to build it up and then?
Not. Yet.
Cuz we just had the first year of it last year.
Yeah, for draft three, I'll ha, I'll have a slide that you can use for public hearing to talk a little bit more about. What those funds are being used for.
That technology was used for the big things, like like servers and, and, and bigger ticket items. That you wanna save over a couple of years and the only way for to save over a couple of years is to have a trust fund rather than operating.
Well, I get, yeah, it's.
So the other one is for like just regular, like laptop replacement and all of those things. To keep those on cycle, that's, that is an operative.
Yeah. I can have something kind of like I do for facilities that shows what the projects are.
That'd be great.
So it would probably be helpful. I can do that for, for vehicle too, cuz we do have that. I'll just put it in a grid. To help explain. Alright, and.
I only know cuz I have this in my.
Yeah, but so this is just the process. We've had. Three Ways and Means meetings, we've had subcommittee meetings, we've had questions. We're at draft two. So there's another Ways and Means meeting in December and then the, the final draft three. And then we go right into bond public hearing. Budget and Warren articles. And then that night, there's a final Ways and Means meeting. To hopefully they'll be able to vote on the budget. On their recommendation or not of the budget and the Warren articles and the board the same to put those two deliberative. So. That's the process.
Is there, if anything slips, are we up against the legal limit of not part of or deliberative or?
No, we'll just, I'll, I'll keep you guys, you know. In check, but it's, it's helpful.
I mean, snow comes and.
We have a snow day for, for public hearing.
Okay.
And deliberative too, I believe.
Deliberative, I'm not in charge of.
Right, I know, I'm saying like, there's some rule isn't there about like, you have to have these. Public hearings so far before deliberative and all this stuff, so how, how tight are we now? We have some room?
It's, uh, well, we're not gonna reschedule the public hearing.
No, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not gonna reschedule. Yeah, we're not, unless there's.
Well, there's a snow day.
If there's a snow day for public.
Like you're getting two in a row.
Yeah, other than that. That's about it.
Okay, great.
I think everything else is just like a normal.
Yep.
You know, normal ebb and flow. We moved this meeting back four days if we had to move.
That's fine.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, but we're in good shape.
I heard the twenty fifth is an open day for everybody, so.
And, and thank you for having these so early so that we could get them on our calendars, especially all the subcommittees and things.
Yeah.
And putting those near lunchtimes.
Yes.
So we could try.
And that is helpful for people.
Well, it's certainly helped me. I can't speak for everyone, but I really appreciate being on.
So. I know the means is here. I don't know if they're on.
Yep, yeah, if Caitlin would like to come on. Come on up, Caitlin, like to and pull the chair closer to the owls, I know.
Yeah, they haven't seen draft two yet, so this is new for them.
Yeah, we had communicated via email just about any general questions or just a brief update.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm happy to give the board an update, which is really just that. We did complete the subcommittee meeting, like Amy mentioned. Those were attended by various members of Ways and Means. We split those up. We came back last week or the week before, I can't get my week straight, as a Ways and Means Committee as a whole to share. The content that was discussed at those, at those subcommittee meetings. We had some good discussions. We're also putting together some summary kind of one pagers for each of those subcommittees. For not only our reference, but to help us with. With the public hearing deliberatives. So we're on track with our process.
And we addressed Mark taking over for Ellen as well. I don't know if you were here for the beginning part, but we did address that, so. We will be able to work with them. Obviously, we'll typically have a meeting between the chairs of the two committees and Mark before, or the moderator, I should say. Before the deliberative, just to go over how that will flow in the process for that. So we'll, you know, organize that as we get into January.
Great.
Have you talked to Mark at all since coming?
Uh, we've exchanged some emails as a group. He wanted to know when our next meeting was, so I'm assuming if he's asking, he's planning to attend.
Okay, when did that happen? When did? Paying moderators?
Effective the fifteenth.
Yeah, we have, we are in talk with tonight, and then we are also going to, we have a press release going out tomorrow.
Okay, so we've already. Have wanted to sit down and we have a little place. Okay, that's a lot to happen in one press release, but. Okay, and then are you guys, did you, did you talk to him at all? Did you come up at all? You are gonna be. Removed from your off, from your Ways and Means position, like the last moderator did to all the people, okay?
We have not had any direct conversations with Mark about appointments.
Okay.
That wasn't.
And that was also mid, that was at the beginning of a new term too.
Right, that was a new power that no one ever has had, that was the ability to remove people from Ways and Means that hadn't been freely recognized, is my understanding, so.
To be fair, it's a new, it was a new.
Sure, yeah, the new moderator has that power anytime. So if, if Ellen were still on, she could still do it next week, so I wonder if this new person. Hope will not act the same way as the last one did, but I guess we'll see, right? So when is his next meeting?
December tenth.
Oh, wow, okay. It's right in our heart of it, okay. Hopefully we have a smooth.
It's the end of it, really. I, I don't know that it's the heart of it, I just.
To be fair, almost, yeah, changing them when, when the, all the meetings, all the subcommittees that have already occurred, it would make. To me, no sense to change.
Yeah, I don't think.
We want the pressure on the moderator, independent. I was, I was asking if, if the Ways and Means Chair knew about anything, so I'm curious about. Continuity. Let's get to that.
So when Ellen came to our meeting in October to inform us of this taking place. She had indicated, sorry.
I had no idea, so this, I'm hearing about this picture like overnight, so I didn't know this was going around.
So when she approached us as Ways and Means members, since she was the person to appoint us. She did indicate that at least the impression that I received was that we would be. Having our positions through the end of this budget cycle, and then it's a. I think it's a three year appointment as far as I'm aware.
That's what I thought too, but it's not. And Ellen argued it wasn't actually, because she removed people that were on for the twelve, three years, actually, so.
We can, we can cross this bridge when this comes up, we can have this. With Mark not being here, I don't think it's fair to put Caitlin on the spot. I think, I think the whole district will be informed if something like that's gonna happen.
We should be known as in October, though. You, you were here last month.
This wasn't made public officially until.
It wasn't, it wasn't supposed to be made public until we talked about it here.
Okay.
And then it was supposed to happen on Thursday, November fourteenth, hence the, it was going into effect November fifteenth.
Okay.
The clerk knew about it. As the clerk. You know, it's his job to know about it, and then it was superintendent in Ways and Means and. And, and because it was effective November fifteenth, we thought it was the right process to notify. This board here and then officially the community during the press release.
I didn't see in your draft minutes from the October meeting you had. Was it, you said in your meeting in public session, was it in your minutes? That Ellen was signing? Seems like that's an important business thing that should have been in the minutes. Okay.
Thank you, thank you for the, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for all your time and all of the many, many subcommittees and so on.
Okay, any? Any other questions for Amy on budget stuff?
Yes. So I'm not sure if it's a question for you or question for the rest of the board. I know that. In one of mine, we, I actually asked for, for money to be added for one thing in Clark Wilkins. And the Ways and Means member there also agreed with that addition, but the broader board hasn't had a chance to weigh in on that. Do we do that now or will we do that later?
Now would be great. So Mike, if you wanna go to.
I mean, I did give my notes to them and give them a heads up.
That was for the Clark Wilkins Activity Stipends, five additional. So that's the. It's five thousand seven hundred and forty three dollars.
But just as a reminder, this is, we know that our, our after-school clubs are extremely popular Clark Wilkins. They are one of the. Benefits that has come from the time change swap that they have that time at the end of the day, and we have a waiting list every time. And it is such a hugely important thing to. Give us well-rounded kids who are doing good things, and so I asked if we could just increase it by a little bit. To let even more students participate each, each session. I guess they're not quarters, they're like three times a year that we offer them.
It's three sessions, fall, winter, spring.
And so it's, it's not a huge shift, but every dollar counts, and I just thought that it is really, it affects. You know. The whole population there, and I wanted to have as many students as, as possible to be able to benefit from that.
Does this cover fifteen new clubs, like five each session, or is it one, it's five total, so it could be one in spring, two in winter?
I, I just had a quick question, so. Do we know that we have enough staff interested to, to pull off five additional more clubs?
I believe so, the, the principal indicated to.
Yeah, there were like thirty offered and we could do like ten, so.
So yes, it is. I put it in there as a result of the subcommittee meetings, but yes, it would be up to the board whether you want to include that or not.
So again, because I only am one member of five, I wanted to make sure that you all feel comfortable with it. Okay, well, there you go. I've done my due diligence. It has now been officially.
But while we're on things that the board needs to weigh in on. The four hundred thousand dollar Warren article, we did discuss that and we had consensus amongst the board last month, but we didn't take a formal. Any formal motion to move that forward. So I wondered if that might just be a good practice to do that, to create that. I think it's, what is it, Warren article? Four, fourteen, I don't know the numbers, is it fourteen?
It's fourteen, yeah.
No, it's thirteen.
A thirteen.
Thirteen is solar.
Thirteen solar, right?
That was fifteen, fifteen, fourteen thousand.
Now?
Fourteen is the building.
Wait until draft three, when I'm gonna ask you to move all of them.
Oh, okay.
Either way.
So Amy was suggesting that we could just do them with draft three when we.
Yeah.
I will ask a motion to move them all.
All of them, oh, perfect.
Yeah.
That's perfect, man.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I just didn't. Didn't wanna let, I had to actually go back and watch last month's meeting because I couldn't recall it on discussion if we had wrongly.
Yep.
Moved that or if it was just a. And, and I just.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. And then for draft.
Especially though, here, just, just for in or out, I think it would make that go faster that part of it, but then you could change it.
Go for it.
I mean, if we're gonna, my feeling is if we're going to do.
Way of all as part of one package at the end.
Yeah.
I'd rather just do them all at one, just see what the ramifications are coming back from. The third budget draft.
Okay, so and just a reminder for draft three. I will have the revenue projections as well, so those will be included. For the board to have, have that information and the tax impact estimates for all the Warren articles.
Okay.
How are we doing on the unassigned or whatever it's called, the unassigned fund balance, but the, how are we doing on the budget? Are we on pace for spending low you wanna see this time of year?
Um, we'll have projections for next month.
Next month.
So, yeah, there's no, no red flags, though.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright. Moving on to our next item is the subcommittee, so if we wanna start with building and ground Shannon or Greg, I'm not sure who wants to go first. Shannon, you got it?
Sure, yeah, so as Amy actually did a fantastic building and grounds update. Thank you very much for that. As Amy mentioned, our meeting last week was devoted to seeing the new cost, the newly costed. Update, of note, Roger mentioned that this was about the twelfth time he's gone through this costing exercise. With, with a construction manager, second construction management firm, so Roger does a really fantastic job of. Going line by line through. Um, going line by line through the whole thing. I think Greg would probably agree with me that Roger's pretty detailed and thorough in that. And he walked, he walked building grounds through that. Um, so we spent a lot of time, um, you know, just looking at that. Again, it's fifty-two point nine as opposed to the forty-nine-nine, um, with the three point nine-five um, estimated. Uh, rate from the New Hampshire municipal bond bank for about twenty-five years, um. And solar uh, did come up at the end of our meeting, um, so not, not much more to report there, other than the committee um. Voted to recommend to this board that we explore that um, option, and. Um, the gap, yeah, Amy really gave the, the update. I, I don't think there's anything extra, Greg, um, from our last meeting at Building and Grounds. Um, unless I'm just missing something, which is possibly, I agree with that one too.
No, got Amy, definitely.
Yeah, thank you for saying, Amy said it all. Um, but in your packet, um, there is a, a PowerPoint. And that's really not for any major discussion. We discussed this last month. It was the um, phasing and staging plan. For the roof project, and um, we just asked that that be included so that you have that, um, just as some supplemental. Information, um, but that supported last month's discussion. Um, so if you have any questions on that, um, I'm happy, happy to take those. Um, but otherwise, that is my building and grounds update. And then I also attended the New Hampshire, um, the delegate assembly last month. So, um, not a, not a huge update, but I really found it um, informative. It was. It was enjoyable and interesting to, to see how other boards across the state kind of operate and talk about. I particularly enjoyed the Jaffrey Ridge School Board. They received the um, twenty twenty-four School Board of Excellence Award. Uh, so they gave a presentation about, you know, the challenges in their district and how they're working to overcome those. Uh, notably, they have a difficult time passing budgets as, you know, most of us do in these days, um. But they talked about some things that they, that they have done, that they found success with, that I thought were interesting. Um, obviously, communication is, is a huge thing that they are working on. They have actually invested in their operating budget. They've created a line for um, like a print um, communication piece, um, and they were like, you know, it's, it's expensive. Like, it's no small amount of money to, to budget for this, but they found it very helpful to have something go to. Their voters' hands that talked about what was happening within their school district, um, and keeping them informed of their strategic design. And there's, they're also going through a strategic planning process, um, and they, um, they were having uh, trouble. Uh, they were trying to create more opportunities for uh, CTE programs, but also um. Retain employees without adding to um, to their bot, you know, to their, to their overall cost. So they actually um, ended up creating a childcare center as that, that is a benefit to students that they, it's part of their programming there. And then it's available to staff to use, that's awesome, for free. So, yeah, I just, I thought that was interesting. Um, but anyway, again, nothing major happened at that meeting really to report on, but it was um, but it was a nice time, and I appreciate you all. Um, letting me be your delegate.
But it's fun, the um, the newsletter that Jaffrey has, is that something that they mail to people?
It is.
Okay.
Yep, it is, and so that's why there's a, a, they had to put it in their operating budget as a, as a line item, because it's not cheap to do a mail.
It's not to the parents, it's residents.
Yeah, it's the whole town, exactly, which was, I think.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, because I think they're having that same, you know, like we have it here.
Once a year kind of thing, like around voting?
I don't wanna misspeak. It was either once or twice. I have a copy of their presentation somewhere, if you go back and find it. Um, but they found that to be a, a huge benefit in just, you know, informing all members of the community. I think that's. We, we struggle with it, right? We don't have that local door-to-door paper anymore. Some people, you know, different pockets in the community. Uh, consume their news in different places, so um, they felt like it was money well spent. And I, to, that I kind of, I clung on to that, so like, oh, that's, that's an interesting.
Just something, we do budget for printed voters, but.
Right, this was, this was outside of that. This was, you know, more of a.
It's what, we had talked about this when Tim Burge was on the school planning board last year.
But it was just interesting to, to hear from another board who's, you know. Passing forward movement happening, um, that, that that was helpful in their community, and every community is obviously different. You know, has, has different things that will work and, and won't work. But I thought that was something to consider for future planning, as we talk about communication often.
Just uh, one guy, Greg, I'm sorry.
I was gonna ask about this, um, I thought about one more meeting, we've got to get back to it, the, the NHSA costs us some money. Um, it's, it's worth continuing to do this, we think, because of these meetings, and we got all those emails that we get from these guys or.
So in, in my opinion, I've attended several of their trainings, and I find them hugely beneficial, um. Because they cover topics like, you know. Or say ninety-one A, right, there's a whole, that, you know, and you can ask questions and, um. Their new board member onboarding, I think, is beneficial, um, you know, that alone, I think, is worth it. Um, for, for new folks joining the board, um.
They also play a heavy hand in policy assistance.
I don't, I don't know how we could.
Yeah, in terms of drafting templates or having templates available and connecting resources with other school districts, I think that lift alone, from what I've seen in the. Three policy meetings I've been at would be completely untenable for, unless you're a full-time school board, and a, a full-time. School employee or a school board is your full-time job.
Yeah, so just to give you a little color on how the policy part of it works, um, Greg, they each year, and they produce. Their up, you know, a list of updated policies, and they'll have like a required or recommended, and it tracks with legislation. So that's why it's really beneficial to us, um, because, you know, depending on the year and, and what hap, what's happening. Um, at the state, there could be multiple changes that we need to be on top of, and they provide suggested wording. But then as, as a policy committee, we then go in and look at their suggestions and, and take them and, and work through them if they make sense for our. For our account.
I think the best example would be Title Nine, with the complexities of the changes around Title Nine. Um, for this year, and uh, and I, I do find them beneficial to, to have as a resource.
Great, thanks. How did our votes compare to everybody else's uh, to be, but with the majority all the time, or how did we vote?
So we, well, we abstained for quite.
Right, right, right.
Um, it's interesting, I sat next to the representative from Merma, um, so we had, we had a lot of the same votes. As, as those folks, I don't have a, like a.
Yeah, I'm curious, were we like, in the mainstream, were we outliers on many issues of one category?
I, I honestly think we abstained from so many that would have.
Did other.
Given you a picture of.
Did other schools abstain from a lot, or they tend to have?
So the way voting in that room works is it's a, a, you know, a yay and nay, so it's, it's kind of hard to. They don't write down, Amber's voted this way.
It's like a, a palette you write or something like that, or?
You have like a, like a yellow card, it's like a deliberative, so I don't.
Okay.
I, I can only tell you how the majority went on each item, like, I couldn't really tell you if.
What the count was.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there was anything that, I mean, there were certainly some opportunities where people got up and, and kind of fought for things, um. At the microphone, um, what, one was the, um. I gotta find it. It's the, the one about the remote attendance.
Yes.
Yeah, so I thought that was gonna be pretty like benign, um, but there was one district, and I can't tell you who right now, cause I have to scour my notes. Who wanted, uh, who, who wanted to tweak the way that was written because they did not want it. To uh, include, they only wanted it to include subcommittees, I think, not the actual.
Not board.
Yeah, so the.
Did that pass?
No, that change didn't pass. They had already. Yes.
Okay, that's good.
Most of them pretty much went the way that they.
And just be recommended.
Yeah, but there was, there was some good discussion that was just interesting, you know, to, to, to hear.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, in terms of policy, we went through a couple of policies, or closer to approving some of those, and we'll have more on that in the South, the. So in the SAU meeting on Thursday, and then we'll have more on that in our next meeting in December, so not, not a whole lot to share outside of that for policies that are ready to go now. We don't have anything on the agenda tonight to approve, so.
Oh, we're, okay, we're not, okay.
Nope, we don't have anything to do, so we'll be able to do those in a bulk packet next, next month, so. Uh, long-term planning committee, um, full meetings there, like, um. So, we're gonna have Mike give a full update this week at the SAU meeting, it's Thursday night, right, Mike? So, um, I'll just say, we discussed sort of the uh, the breakdown of, and just so you're aware, the way it's working is um. We're kind of raising topics, uh, Mike's going off doing a lot of work, giving us feedback, and then it's kind of a. Uh, that kind of, that's the format of the kind of meeting so far, so we're not doing sort of the long-term planning, we're not, you know, um. Not being exclusive, so we're trying to be as inclusive, everyone's all the notes, so that's why Mike's gonna update the SAU board. Instead of us doing like a Mont Vernon board and a speaking board and Amber's board, because we all have different sort of memories, so we'll give that on Thursday, if you're okay with that.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yep, that's it, long-term, okay. Can I go back to the Ways and Means real quick?
Yes.
Okay, so uh, Caitlin, thanks, uh, Tom was actually showing me the October minutes.
Those were the November minutes.
November minutes.
That was November sixth, which was a week ago, twelve days ago, and it would have been brought up in our meeting on the fourteenth.
Okay, so the board did have that Ellen, I just wanna talk, address you that Ellen did, um.
The, he's on social.
Ellen did, you know, so Ellen did, did acknowledge she was gonna be stepping down and moving out of town. We're in the minute, so thanks.
Yes, alright, yeah, I was getting my months confused.
Yes, yeah, cool, thanks for, uh, good job, uh, notes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Makerspace, so Terry wanted to bring this conversation to the board. We've. Batted this back and rat, back and forth a little bit, probably more informally than truly formally like we will tonight perhaps, or. Um, at least maybe as in-depth as we have in the past, so Terry, I will let you um, give the long version of it, but the Cliff Notes is. The leader of the Makerspace does, is interested in potentially moving that space or moving that equipment over to South Eagan High School into the Annex. So Eagan's board or So Eagan has expressed some interest. I don't know if it's been widespread, if it's been all seven have voted yes, move it over here or not, or if it's just been conversational at this point. But we do wanna rekindle that conversation with our board to see if we're interested in it, and then look at how that would actually move and what. Equipment would remain here to facilitate any academic uses that we're currently getting out of that, so I'll let you.
Sure.
Go in any further detail, Terry.
And just for committees, by the way, Wellness Committee did meet, but that's like an SAU-wide one, so we can just talk about it in SAU.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, this one, I just wanted to give a little bit of background, because some of you know, some of you know how Makerspace works, and some of you don't. It was definitely a kind of a passion project of Porter Dodge, back when he was principal here at AMS. And it was saying, hey, we have these, these things available, and they aren't doing anything at night and on the weekend. And so could we get back to our community, give them the opportunity to use these things in a reasonable way? And like most people don't have um, a planer and a joiner in their garage. They may have, you know, their own saw, but they're not gonna have some of those pieces of equipment. And so there were, there are lots of programs around the country, including in our state, but we're the only one that we knew of, especially at that time. That would fully be in a school that was truly open um, to the community, um, as a paid thing, and one of the biggest. Expenses always is literally the facility that you're in, right? So being able to kind of lease the space from the school. It took away that heavy expense that was affordable, but then it also brings you the value of maintaining equipment and bringing new equipment in. That comes in through the members of the Makerspace, so they've been able to really be able to make improvements in that part, in that wing. And it lets our taxpayers have an opportunity to use some of these resources, um, in the evening, on the weekends, whether or not they have students in. The schools, and it also has been really popular for families to come and work on things together, and so it has a lot of upsides. And it's been a really popular program. It brings in a little bit of revenue. We split it between, um, the rec department is the one who controls the memberships. They take all of, they do all the paperwork, um, the Makerspace themselves, they program the key card access. During the times that they're allowed to be there, and they also put additional safeguards on equipment that takes um, additional training, like even for, for Makerspace members. Not everyone's allowed to use everything. If you haven't been trained to weld, you don't get to use welding equipment willy-nilly, right? You have to have training. And so we do have some additional safeguards to put on those. We've worked closely with the insurance company for the school to make sure that there are some. Additional improvements, both for students and for other people who use that equipment, so. The amount of revenue that comes in originally, it was really targeted to just be used in that wing to make improvements. Because what comes in through Makerspace goes right back to that program and to equipment that both students and the public can use. Um, but the money that came in for the school, it's, it's their prerogative for how they wanna use it. So it's still used here at AMS, but originally it was just used in that wing. Since then, it's sometimes been used for other things in the building. But regardless, it's able to help students here and help the school. So if part of it, um. Looking at this again, we're not looking at moving everything out, like anything that is for the curriculum here would stay here, like the wood shop actually does get used. But we only have one teacher down there, and so he can't have any classes that are very small, because he's taking all of the grades through, all four grades. And there's one person, and by the way, we're about to approve um, his notice that he's going to be gone at the end of the school year, so we don't even know who the next teacher's going to be. But no matter who it is, it would be a one-for-one, and he can't do large, um, things, and you can't do certain things. Like the metal shop pieces and the lathe, and there's some equipment that's just not appropriate to do with a bigger group. And it's not currently being used by our students as part of our programming. So definitely the wood shop gets used, um, the three D printers, the kitchen, or you know, a lot of the things do get used, but not everything. And so this would be looking at taking the things that are more appropriate to an older student and, and to, um. Possibly seating a CTE program over at the high school, that we've looked at the fact that not all students are on track to do a four-year college. That's not for every student, their future, right? We have a shortage of tradesmen in this country and in the state. And there are a lot of funds available to expand and to build out CTE programs to help fill this need. And so if we were able to take some of the things that have already been given to this program and that are here. And move them over into that space that are more appropriate for an older student, so it would still help Amherst students, but just at a more age-appropriate time. In their development, and we would be really have to look at closely for what would stay, what would go, what would be replicated, right? Like some of the wood things, you would also wanna have over there, so we would keep what belongs to AMS, and then they would have to purchase either Makerspace directly. Or the high school would have to purchase their own. They would be able to possibly move some things down from their second floor, bring it down to their first. And one of the things that we've wanted for a long time, for both the community and for students, is like an auto lift. And that's kind of thing that absolutely would be most appropriate for a high school audience and not for a middle school audience.
What's auto lift?
An auto lift would be to be able to run cars. And we, it would not be inside, it would probably be right at the outside, and it would be, but it would be something that if they were to have a true CTE program over there, it could be looked at. And then bringing a part-time person for that, and we could also charge a rent for, um, like an additional fee for community members to use it. And we could use it for our, um, our fleet and our district as well for the SAU, if we had it available. So there are some real benefits that could come from, again, we've already done a proof of concept that the Makerspace as a concept works really well. Um, we don't wanna take away the program, and we don't wanna take away access to middle school at all. We simply wanna say what's appropriate for the students. In this point in their learning, and then what would be more appropriate for students at a later date. And then if there are a handful that wanna go use the equipment, like right now, we give special um, passes to kids who wanna work on their senior projects. And they wanna come and they wanna use some of the equipment and work in the Makerspace. They get, you know, they get a free membership for that senior year to be able to come and work. But they have to bring like an adult with them, and so instead it would let them have it right there, and they have a very um, robust robotics club. That would really love to have more things available to them right there on their campus. And so there are a lot of advantages to, again, taking the pieces that make sense, and just so you understand that things that get donated to Makerspace. Belong to Makerspace, and that's part of the, the understanding, is that there have been significant um, investments and donations. That they don't belong to Amherst School District, they belong to Makerspace proper. But they're here, and we've been commissioned for them to be on our space, so kind of like we own the land under the annex, but we don't own the annex, kind of like that. So, we, I'm not asking to change it right now, I'm just asking if I could enter into talks between, and I have spoken with Makerspace leadership. I've spoken with um, Martin Vernon, um, currently they only have one member on, on So Egan board, because that member resigned, so they're waiting for another to be appointed. But I have spoken with their, their existing Martin Vernon member, he's interested in speaking about this, and I've spoken to um, at least two of their Amherst members. Who are interested in having a conversation, so I'm simply asking for your permission to start discussions to see if this would make sense. And what timing would make sense, and, and if we wanna move forward with any changes, so. It's not asking you to make a vote right now on, yes, we wanna say goodbye to Makerspace, it's the nice, it's simply having these discussions with a wider audience.
Yeah, so I think that's our goal, is if we wanna nominate Terry or appoint Terry to. Yeah, so I think that's our goal, is if we wanna nominate Terry or appoint Terry to. Enter into these discussions as part of the subcommittee of the wider S A U, or at least with South Eagan, maybe not Mont Vernon specifically. So if we want to, if we're open to that, and then pointing Terry to that, um, I think the caveats that I would like to see as part of this is that it costs zero dollars. For Amherst to be responsible for moving costs, whatever it takes for. Moving this equipment and retrofitting South Eagan appropriately, that is a zero cost dollar amount for Amherst.
Right, um, so not for Amherst, doesn't count, but Amherst.
Amherst School District, yes, that would be my concern, so that that's the only caveat that I would have in there, and that it would be done the least amount of. You know, disruption to students, of course.
And we'd probably be looking over the summer.
Yeah, Shannon.
Um, I have a question on the revenue, you said that uh. Amherst gets a a little bit of revenue from the maker space, do we know what that is?
You know, I don't have the most recent numbers um available right now, and I don't, I don't wanna give you one out of, out of nowhere, right? I know that over time, it's definitely been um several thousands. But any given year, it kinda it ups and flows, so it's not nothing, but it's not so much that I'm gonna say, oh, wow. There's a hundred thousand, we were using the net, we can't, it's certainly not.
It's probably enough to pay for a custodian or somebody to open the building and close the building.
I wonder, I mean, I don't know, I I've heard mixed things about the. Um, member of number, I think that the folks who are members of the maker space really do appreciate and enjoy it, I just. I don't know, because I don't know. How large that membership is, and and it, you know, what type of.
So absolutely.
Talking about potentially, you know, transferring to.
Right, if if I came back with any, with any true proposal, I would have those numbers very clearly, you know, explained, I don't wanna guess at them. And they just have had leadership change with um with Craig leaving at.
Oh, yeah.
At the red department, and so I certainly, I don't wanna take a guess at those, I do know that it is. It is, it is not nothing, but it is, it is less than fifty thousand a year, I love that.
So I, I'm personally fine with having the conversation, I feel like I've heard. A couple different things over the years when we brought this up, at one point in time, it was, we don't need the. Equipment here, it doesn't work with our curriculum, then it was, we do need it here, then it was, we don't need it at the high school, so if there are, if there's interest and. You know, the teachers all are are on the same page with that, I I certainly would would. Be fine to explore it and to learn more.
I did speak with Mr. Oprah as well, our, our, our teacher here, and I haven't had a chance to speak directly um with Charlie, who's their engineering teacher. Um, about this. Recently, but I have spoken to him in the past, and he's certainly come and explained what we have here, but it's just not practical for him on a daily basis to come over. And use, especially because we have classes going on, so our equipment being available doesn't help him with his curriculum. But it would give him other opportunities if some of it was over, was physically over there. And I did also um find out that it would probably cost like one day and about a thousand dollars to move the biggest things, we'd have to get a rigging company. That's what it took to bring some of those things in, so it's probably about the same cost it would be to go there, but again. To your point, it wouldn't be our cost as an Amherst School District, it would be um incumbent upon. So he can, who's receiving and maker space to come to an agreement for how they're gonna cover that cost.
Oh, one more caveat, sorry, Tom, in advance. Um, if we're talking about. Moving stuff into the annex. As being a word. That doesn't make sense to anybody else that we. Make the motion to to include, to advise uh. Or allow Sue Hegan to move forward their discussion on the best use of. The annex, including maker space or any other possible use that is part of the long-term planning, part of the S A U facilities discussion. Getting ahead of anything that might happen in March, so we're. You know, we're allowing them to go forward any kind of plan they want with the annex.
I don't think they need us to allow them to go forward with any annex.
What's the, what's the pretend thing they have?
The, it is, if a school just, if another district is interested in having a discussion about the annex and moving students there, they would be open to discussing that. And so I don't think that there's any.
Any other interest here besides me on that, that comprehensive discussion, I'll do five, if not, I don't wanna drag it out, but is anyone interested in that?
It's, so this is not talking about moving.
No, he's just asking if we should have the entire utilizing the annex for any number of things, but we're gonna move seventh and eighth grade over there, that's what they wanna discuss.
Or, yeah, definitely, or or maker space or anything else.
But those are two separate issues that.
I'm just trying to come to combine them.
Yes, great, I want to say, just, just remind you that we, we did approach them and say, hey, we are interested in possibly having. Preschool, because that was something that we thought could benefit their students as an early.
I remember that, I just, yeah, I, I think, Terry, I don't, are you interested in seventh, ninth grade?
And seventh and eighth was a separate thing, and we all collectively decided that that was not something we wanted to pursue.
Not, not we.
Has, has your, has your opinion changed?
And my opinion has not changed on that.
Shannon's mind has.
No, no, I'm done, thank you.
And so this is, this is a, a third.
Yeah, we, we don't wanna go into that.
It's separate.
We are, we got, we're on.
I heard the annex, and my.
Yeah.
wider sense went up, so, there you go.
I'm sure it's gone up in other places in town too, so.
Okay, good enough.
Any uh.
So there's no vote either, you just wanted.
Well, I.
Well, I think we should take a motion to appoint Terry uh as the Amherst representative to any maker space committee that develops.
So guys, the one thing about the long-term planning is, it seems like it's a conflict, I mean, to me, it's a conflict. And that is wrong, so. Part of long-term planning is facilities, we don't currently have a comprehensive. You know, S A U Y. Facilities, strategic plan, um, this would be part of it, if we had that, do we wanna piece this off? Into this um section, or do you wanna recommend that be brought into the? Long-term planning.
So can I just ask, so do you, you don't consider the. Five-year capital needs assessments that Roger has created for each district to be comprehensive long-term plans for. The maintenance and upkeep of the schools?
No, okay, I do, I don't consider, no, I do, I do consider, we we phrase it, I don't consider it to be. Tie in between what is the best configuration for. The curriculum, the circulation, the facilities, all things we talked about, long-term planning. Um, how that all connects to make the. The ideal, you know, whatever, S A U students, not just A M S, but also Mont Vernon, also Sue Hegan. So that doesn't exist right now, I think that's what the whole point of. You, you know more than I do, that's I think why you made the motion at S A U to create the long-term planning group. So if. I'm not real, I though, I have no real strong feelings, that's, but I'm talking for a long time, um, I think Kerry would do a good job at that, I just wanna note that. It seems to me to be a subset of the. Long-term planning, ready.
I mean, yes and no, Greg, I think that.
Well, it would be Terry, because you're gonna have to retrofit that building, that building, you can't move in all the stuff that we have here. Directly over in that building, I don't think today, can you? There's gonna need to be some retrofit.
Other science labs that are in there, and looking what they're gonna do there, and so because they're having the overall discussion of. What do we, we, they know that that's an issue that they have to deal with.
Or accreditation.
And it definitely feeds into, and so maybe opening up space in the main building and moving those there, doing some of this there, it's like because they're looking. Anyway, this was good timing to say, hey, this was another area that they were looking at expanding. Um, opportunities for their students and looking at, they have like forty of them going into C T E programs. Off of, you know, so he can campus right now, and so looking at expanding opportunities. In the high school, this just fed into.
Okay.
Things that they're doing at the high school level, and so while they do affect Amherst students and S A U students. It's more towards those particular programming things that they're doing. And so it was good timing because they're looking holistically at their programming.
Why don't we ask that? Terry be joined by somebody from St. Hegan, whether it's a board member, someone that that board wants to join Terry. Because it affects that.
Oh, no, no.
No, it's gonna be a part of, it's gonna be major space involved, so he can involve, yeah. Arm rap is Terry, is the.
Yes, on record, yeah, 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 it's not Terry, just.
I guess what, it's yours now, whether you want it or not, either.
Okay, now she mentioned three members of the South Eagan Board.
Okay.
Terry to have a conversation on it, and then I would come back and and need, and even go from this work for any changes we're made, obviously.
Yeah, alright, so I'll take the motion to appoint Terry to be the Amherst representative for any maker space conversations regarding a move of facilities.
I'll make the motion.
Get a motion from Greg, can I get a second? From Shannon, any further discussion?
I would say the only thing would be to um to formally invite them to such discussions, because I think that, like, I've had informal conversations, but we haven't formally asked to start.
So have. Appoint Terry. To be the Amherst liaison and create the committee.
There you go.
Get invitations for a potential maker space move.
Okay, thank you.
Move that, new wording.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Have fun, Terry.
Four in favor, none against. Okay.
Reason that it's a day, and it was already a full agenda.
Yeah, no problem, alright, personnel, we have four retirements for F Y twenty-six, Betsy Kellendorfer, Mary Ireland. And then for the end of this school year, uh Stephen Opry and uh Principal Perel over at. Senior Vice Principal, Assistant Principal Perel over at Clark Wilkins, anything you'd like to add to that one?
Yeah, I, I mean, there's a lot of experience and dedication to Clark Wilkins and Amherst. Walking out the door over the next couple of years, um, and they will absolutely be missed. Uh, you know, Betsy and Mary at the end of F Y twenty-six, uh such a long history of. Of of, you know, doing the good work on behalf of kids, and then this year, um. Steve Opry and and Anna Perel, and uh, you know, lots of experience there, and you, we, we. Steve's taught, you know, for a, a number of years, uh pretty unique skill set. Benefit from it, and then Anna Perel, just uh kinda in the same long lines of uh. You know, we talk about Steve Sherman when he resigned as an administrator in over thirty years, and anyone who's in over it thirty years in this arena of public education. Just a lot of uh, especially in leadership, but you know, all these, you know, staff members, just so much dedication. And so I would definitely make a motion to approve the entire slate with deep regret and just recognize that there's a lot of. Close to a hundred years of experience. Moving on.
And I appreciate that, Mike, so I will take a motion to accept the four retirements, two for this year, two for next year with regret. Terry, thank you. Second. Shannon. Any further comments, questions?
Yeah, just, just the thank you to those folks for their commitment to.
Congratulations to.
Yeah, yeah, congratulations, and but thank you for their commitment, sir. To, to our kids and. Public education.
It, it will be a loss to us, but it's, it's an exciting next chapter, though, for sure.
Alright, all in favor? Four get four and not against. Long-term planning.
Hmm, yeah, so um, quick update, we're gonna have this as a standing agenda item, the updates will look different depending on the work that is happening, but since uh. The, we last met as an S A U board and and uh, wanted to just kind of update. The individual boards about the work, and and so we, we met on November fourth as a building leadership. Administrators and uh senior leadership team members to start to review. And reflect on the framework, uh keep in mind, it's not even a year old, it was kind of rolled out and approved in January of twenty-four. And as we continue to wanna, you know, be a little aggressive with, with our evolution of this and. And to gain some momentum to, you know, kind of formalize the long-term planning. Uh, eh, you know, over the next couple of years, we, there's some things that we wanna do with the framework to actionize it, so we had a meeting on the fourth. Went through a process, uh kind of reviewed that process with the, the subcommittee uh this afternoon, which uh the, we met today. Um, and then out of that, you know, there's, there's some work talking about. How each building is aligning their priorities and goals to the framework and how it's kind of. You know, helping with the work as an entire S A U and kind of keeping those through lines really consistent. From pre-K to elementary schools into the middle school, um, more work to come on that, next steps. I got some uh meetings lined up with uh students at uh A M S, seventh and eighth grade students, and and then at so he can to kind of continue the work there. Uh, a more formal update will take place uh this Thursday at the S A U meeting. So.
Yeah, I appreciate those, uh, the reflection notes, um.
That's just another example of all the good things that are happening that we, we don't know about, and so any questions that you guys will have on Thursday? Um, we had a two for this week, right, so you can get questions kicked back pretty quick.
Did you mention it, uh, Mike, that you talked to all the school board, the school leadership, the uh, girl leadership?
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah, on November fourth, went through a process there.
That was good, I think, I think the committee is supportive of what you're doing, I think there wasn't a lot of controversy or comments made, right?
No, it was, it, it, they're definitely advising, you know, like, make some moves. Get some feedback, get some charging and some questions asked, and then, you know, my job is to kind of operationalize that process. And keep people updated, so. More to come and more work with different stakeholder groups in D- December and January, uh but we'll get to that as we plug away.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Would you like to go with super?
Yeah, superintendent updates, um. Got a couple things, we have the assistant superintendent positions posted on October twenty-eighth, um, it's, it's been a slow start to it. And uh, to that process and uh, um, but we have it open, it, and the timeline might have to be adjusted because of, of the slow start and, and uh. Um, I think it, we were out a little bit earlier than, than, than other places, and so we're trying to wrap it up by Christmas. Uh, break or holiday break, there might not be a reality, but more to come on that, uh, it's open, the next update is uh really excited about. A meeting that we're having on uh November twentieth, um, we're gonna start to really dig into the, you know. You, you know, trying to establish what we call, you know, a foundation for technology and well-being and education. Looking at one-to-one, our work around one-to-one devices, what we ask kids to do with that. The instructional strategies and practices with that, talking about cell phones, both for, for, for staff and and. And, you know, guidelines and expectations for adults, um, talking a little bit about instructional time, how it, you know, plays into that. Um, and so it's just the very beginning of that piece, that is a, a, a big lift. For, for places, this will be absolute partnerships with boards, this will be partnerships with parents, this will be partnership with staff at all levels. Uh, it is an S A U initiative, it's, it's throughout the three districts, uh but we'll keep you updated on that work as we come on. This came out of, you know, our work as administrators in S A thirty-nine, that. It, it is, it is something that needs to be addressed, um, we think learning outcomes and the educational experience are. Are deeply affected by how we use one-to-one devices and cell phones in schools. And so having that work and conversation uh, eh, in a formal way. Uh, needs to, needs to happen.
So what is the timeline for any implementation or changes, or can this be piecemeal as you come through?
Yeah.
My biggest concern is, is these.
Yeah, I'm with you, I think.
Especially in the lower levels.
Yeah, so I think uh, um, we are meeting on the twentieth to, we have a very uh aggressive agenda for what we want. To, to do, um, looking after some short-term. Um, short-term efforts, medium-term efforts and long-term efforts.
Yeah.
I do think you'll see things. Start to kick into gear a little bit during second semester of. Uh, some things that we can control, uh like, for example, if you in, in the Amherst Middle School Principal Report. They have some things through their handbook that, you know. Bell to bell. They, they encourage kids not to use them, but it's not so much, that's something they can do at their building level, but what they found out of that is not the. Formal policies, it's the practice, it's the hidden practice, it's the, the, the snap, it's the. Parents reaching out to kids, it's kids, you know, going to the bathroom for a longer time or just going, leaving for ten, fifteen minutes. Uh, so it's, we can have all the formal stuff, but if we don't change the culture and the practice within our students and our staff, and and really families. Um, you know, we're not gonna make the, the impact on that the way we want. So, yeah, I think there's gonna be some short-term stuff, you know, medium-term and long-term, and uh pretty motivated right now as a, as administrators. To work with our staff and students on this. Um, so. Uh, it will find its way into the framework conversation. And the evolution of that. And then the last thing, uh.
And like on that cell phone thing, are you talking to other super about?
Yeah, we, we, we've actually, the fall, we charged the administrators to go gather as much information, so there. People have talked to other principals, uh, we sent Dana Current at South Eagan down to Bedford, Mass last spring. Uh, Kristen Gothiers attended uh two or three webs, uh webinars at the national level and and uh, Nes, uh. Uh, N I S C, um, and we're just gathering different experience from different people. Um, and it's really a reflection of your, the values of your. Your S A U and your, in your towns, really, cuz you know, you know, for example, our White Mountains. I could, as principal, just put things in the place, and everyone said, alright, we're good to go, you know what I mean, like.
Is that common in Amherst?
Yeah, it's not common in Amherst, so, so we'll get definitely gathering information, more to come on this, and uh we'll make sure you get a, a chance, but just starting. Starting on uh Wednesday, um, and then transportation, um. We are working to improve the transportation, we feel like it's a bit steadied, and and this is. I mean, we've had some of the better weeks of transportation in the sense like. You know, with drivers, thirteen routes, but I will tell you this, at the end of the day. We have one or two buses late. Every morning, and we're not clearing buses as quickly after this campus in the evening. Um, and, and that's on a good day, never mind if someone calls in, and so we're working on with Butler's, I mean, Steve. Uh, I was not uh available for that meeting with like two weeks ago, eh, a little over.
Yeah, we're getting.
And then we're getting another update from Butler's on some of the things that we've asked them to do, uh, you probably saw. Uh, a posting for uh bus monitors, uh, we definitely have two or three buses that would warrant. Having another, you know, set of adults on the, or another adult on the bus, um, and that would be a, a one-year position. Um, and that would be a a one year position, you know, while we try to calm that down and plan the more medium and long term. You know, uh changes with our transportation.
With the money we're saving from fewer reps.
Fewer routes and and uh and another way through our contract with Butler's. So. Yeah, it's not, we do feel like we have the. Revenue to. To do this and and it's, in our opinion, in our opinion, it's needed, right? So, so.
A long term position, so.
That sounds really good. Um. So I think that, do you know if. The same drivers are driving the same buses every day or are we, did we provide some slack in the system that allows for us already get sick and they thought there's all the people on staff to?
Yeah, it's it's.
Always been the case.
Yeah, what has?
Allowing substitute drivers.
Okay, because we were so tight before we had the sixteen or fifteen routes that when one driver was out, we had like. A really fragile system.
Oh, no, we don't have more drivers. It's just.
We're on thirteen now, so that provides some more robustness on the driver side, correct?
Reduced because they didn't have another drivers.
And Butler's is a.
By the way, yeah, this is better than before.
It's not robust, but and it, but it's because we've asked them to do less. They are managing it better.
Okay, yeah, that's a good lesson for us. Like, maybe we can think about our. You know, I started on a hot topic. I'm on two or two for tonight, huh?
Yeah.
Start times, um, you know, to reflect, again, the whole system. So we've got buses. Bus drivers. Route times, start times, seat time, end time, sports times. Like, that's what I'm thinking. When I say system thinking, that's kind of what I'm talking about is. You know, it's not just about. How long are we in E L A today? That full picture, how it all plays together. So. One of the factors. To include in that is this robustness of the system, not just. On an ideal day, you can make it all work, but have some.
Yeah, no, I I.
Spots in the system that allow for flexibility.
I made a note of that and we'll continue to plug away on it.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Anything else for Mike? Any other questions? So we had one item that. Was not in the agenda, um because we we just got it later um in the meeting today. Trying to remember if we can, we can address something that's on the agenda. Are we able to do that?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I thought we could. I just wanted to make sure we don't step in any uh any problems here. So. Last meeting, we discussed a uh the face, the last couple of meetings, we discussed the no face mask policy. Determine that with legal advice, it probably wasn't in with precedent or with policies already in place that we don't necessarily need to have a policy. Nor can we legally probably get away with it to ban face masks from all students. So we had determined that. Uh Terry and Greg were going to work on a statement for the board to release in some capacity discussing overall health and wellness tips. For winter time, uh so Terry was able to share that with us as everybody had a chance to review that.
First of all, the motion was not to that face mask and stuff, respect people's right for all classes. And then Terry was only, not me, just this Terry was a lot was.
It was not to make face masks mandatory, which basically said a kid won't be just excluded from education if he doesn't want to wear a face mask.
That's right. Either way, before or against, Terry made sure I had it correct for you. And then the motion was for Terry to go off and do it. Now Terry was not supposed to include me, but the motion we have for this for Terry to do it.
So those points clarified, Terry sent over some news and note or a a proposed. Statement um with this. So if anybody has any comments on this, I have comments as well, but I will open a floor for discussion first.
I'd like to. Because he sent it to me directly and asked me to represent his his thoughts on it.
Thank you.
You want to know?
No, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I I assumed you were going to go with that. Sorry.
Overall, he says he didn't have any problem with it per se. However, he would vote against it because he felt like we were overstepping. That this is the kind of information that should be coming directly from administration rather than from us as a board because our. Let's see, basically that we are in charge of policy and budget and he thought that was outside of that. And I went back to him and I said. But. We do own the policy, like we were very much part of whether or not. It was something that was mandated at our schools, and we also are part of the policy for. Please don't send your kids to school sick, right? Like that is something that we should be backing up, that that message is coming from the nurses, it's coming from administration. But it certainly doesn't hurt for us to um. To reinforce and say, no, no, this is from us too. They're simply enforcing what we've told them is is the rule. And so, um and we have given direct things. Like I had recommended that this could just be an attachment to um like the weekly newsletter home to parents. From the schools and he and he really didn't like that because he said, no, it's theirs. They said. But historically, we absolutely have sometimes as a board, we had our own section for a couple of years. That was like a a board moment. So we have communicated in that way in the past. It does have precedence. And so I'm not saying we have to do it that way, but this doesn't feel like something that I would send as like a press release, right? It's more like just a friendly sort of thing that happens to also touch on the fact that. We have for a while required mask. We're not going to, but if you want to send your student with it, there certainly we will support them if. You make that choice as a family. So we were trying to kind of thread the needle both ways. Um, so he was just against. Using it as a vehicle like with the newsletter. And I said, you know, we have done it. At other times for other things, so that's it's something we've done. We just don't do it that often. But he he didn't want us to overstep and tell administration, here, go send this for us and. He felt like um we were getting too much in the day to day, which I I understand his caution in that, but he said he would respect whatever the majority agreed to.
Can I ask a question, Mike? Have have we received any inquiries? At. The, at your level or at our building principal level? Around any of the topics addressed in this. Specifically masks, because that's what prompted this.
Yeah, no, I um. Looked into this, you know, as we're preparing for this evening. Um, I talked to both Kristen Gothea and Kathleen Murphy. To see if they've gotten any inquiries around this topic. Um, they have not uh received any topics. Uh, you know, or inquiries from this um as at the board level. Um, I haven't really received any topics from this, you know, other than, you know. Work around chronic absenteeism, you know, for whatever reason, but not not with masks, not healthy. Decision making, you know, with their with our families, not us trying to overstep and tell people what to do, right? You know, there just hasn't been a whole lot of conversation around this. Um, so. That's where.
Thank you. So my, you know, my thought on it is I appreciate the work, um Terry, that you put into creating this. This feels more like a. A news, you know, something that would be appropriate for the health office to send out regarding some of these healthy. Behaviors and they do. There's actually a health and wellness section in all of the school newsletters, which. Fellas out of school, so I don't know if you see those or not, but a lot of this is there. I think we've addressed the policy concern in our previous month's discussion. Around this topic. Um, so for me, I I don't, I don't think that this is a necessary um. Thing for us to send out like likewise, I wouldn't, you know, even though we control policies that would, you know, impact a dress code, for example. Um, if we're not getting inundated with inquiries about, are we going to, you know, start a. Uniform policy, we wouldn't randomly send out a communication saying, no, hey, everybody, we're not doing that. So. For those reasons, I just don't know that this is um something. That rises to a board communication at this time.
Uh, no, I just want to maybe add. Uh, or read out loud the one section that Terry wrote. About the the face covering, she called the face mask here. Uh, face masks can make learning and communication more challenging. The Amherst School District does not require face masks in school. However, every student we supported, whether whether or not their family chooses to have them wear a face covering. So I thought that was just nice wording by Terry and I just. Glad to read that out loud.
And I appreciate the work on this too, Terry, but I'm looking at the email we got from the school nurses on Friday and they're from the. School on Friday and the Clark Wilkins one, there is a section note from the nurses that runs through a lot of the stuff that you mentioned in there. So. Um, to me, I don't think this is necessary from the board. Uh, I think that it's a. It's, I I think that this is already being discussed by nurses and that's where it should appropriately stay. And knowing that we have policies in place that can prevent Mike from running wild and signing face masks on every kid in the school or double masks if he uh. Feels it's a really bad viral season. So. Um, with that. Any further comments do we need? Do we want to take a vote as to send this or not? Or we want to thank Terry for the effort and just continue to?
It doesn't hurt my feelings. I said I would do it.
No, and I appreciate that, Terry.
In the happy middle ground, um. It's, it's totally fine if we as as a collective body decided that we don't need it.
Do I have any desire, anybody desire to make motion one way or the other on this? Alright, moving on to our final non-public session of the evening. Are there any community members online that would like to speak? If you are listening in online and you'd like to speak, you can raise your hand. We will promote you into a panelist so you can speak and then we'll give you three minutes. Anybody in person as well?
No one online.
Okay, yeah, no one online raising their hands, nobody in person as well. So with that, I will take a motion to go into non-public. We have two items to discuss a non-public tonight under R S A ninety one A three two. Sections uh L and K, I believe it was. I didn't write down the letter on what it was. It is. L and K for legal advice and tuition agreement. So I will take a motion and a roll call vote to go into non-public. Shannon with a motion, second.
Second.
Uh, you have a second for me, Greg. And Terry, we'll start the roll call with you, please. Gothea, yes?
For it's yes.
So we are in non-public at seven eleven tonight.